What's up Freeport? This is your Freeport City Councilman Mario Morada. And, uh, well, it's February twenty-second, twenty-two, two, twenty-two, twenty-two. But, uh, we got a short agenda and, uh, it's, uh, gonna be, hopefully, hopefully run through it pretty fast or within an hour and a half or two, but, uh, just gonna go over what we're gonna be speaking about and that's, uh, on consent agenda, we're approving the meeting minutes. Uh, we have a spring market days, uh, street closures, so that's gonna be, uh, on consent agenda. Following that, they're gonna talk about consideration and possible actions of street closures again for Earth Day, which will be, oh, and a wellness market on April the twenty-third of this year. Agenda item number five is speaking about a, uh, construction contract with Lucas Construction. And we're gonna start on the Phase One proj- uh, Phase One, Phase One, uh, concrete street reconstruction, uh, on the bid, so we're gonna be discussing it, taking action. Uh, item number six, it's going to be the construction contract with Coa Rubias Remodeling Services for the Public Works Offices. And, uh, that will, that bid was approved on January twenty-fourth of this year. Item number seven is the architectural agreement with I A D Architects for preliminary architectural design for the municipal golf course, the clubhouse. Item number seven, item number eight will be, uh, mending the master fee schedule, uh, setting a rate for rental of the recreation center. Item number nine is, uh, we're bringing back the, uh, the ordinance twenty, twenty-one, twenty-six, forty-eight, which is, uh, requires all city council members and public board members to disclose, uh, real estate assets, uh, that are held in their name, if immediate family name, business name, business entities owned, uh, any agreements with other board members or council members. We're gonna bring that back and discuss it and make, probably make changes. Uh, that'll be the mayor who's introducing that. And, uh, that's pretty much the, uh, city council agenda, and we're gonna go in closed session. Uh, there's a lot of, few, there's a few topics to East End, uh, personal matters, review of the city manager, job performance issues of the city manager, uh, economic development projects, uh, that will be discussed in executive session. But, uh, so far, we've got a few minutes left, and here in a bit, we're gonna be starting, so y'all stay tuned. Shoot, if y'all have questions, I can, uh, you know, chat, put it in chat. I'll be, uh, willing to answer it now that I have a few, few minutes before the council meeting starts. This month, was it this, this week, this weekend, we're gonna have the parade, uh, Mardi Gras on Saturday. It's gonna be at twelve o'clock. Well, uh, it's gonna start at St. Mary's Church and go into downtown Freeport. We're gonna have a Gumbo Clickoff, live music, uh, family activities, fun activities. Yeah, I'll just make sure to bring as much family as you can, make good friends, family, get them out there. There's a lot, a lot of things going on, so, so y'all stay tuned for that. But, uh, in the meantime, we'll get close to starting tonight. Put it back to the outside.
Hello, Councilman Mariah, how you doing?
Good, yes, sir.
So. Yes, sir. Ten more minutes.
You know what, though, I didn't tell Motley.
What's that?
I didn't tell Motley.
Hi. Do you want to call Troy?
Uh, no, let's wait, uh, just three more minutes, about two minutes to.
Jeff, are you, are you, sir? How long's it been? How's your shoulder feeling?
Oh, it's still hurts.
I still can't wait. Yeah, wait just two more months. You know, I'm only gonna let you have that excuse for another thirty days. Where are you being? You back to take it off?
We're short of a microphone.
All right.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Hey, Councilman. Hey, folks. What's his name, Brimage is, is joining by phone, so we've got a mic phone down, for you down here.
Uh, Rixbad, Jerry Kane, Jeff Penya, City Secretary Betty Wells, and the public, y'all.
Well, listen, Jerry's my security blanket, I don't want him. He holds my hand when I'm shaking. Who's up here, man? Uh, Jimin? Or just you being? Martin? Uh, no, uh, no. I'm a little underdressed, one at a time. I do apologize for my underdressed. So tired, but I do need to, where would I charge my phone is the question.
I have to bring chargers, dude.
You know, the problem is charging my phone back here, because I can't be, trying to text messages.
Uh, folks, there were a few folks showing up, uh, kinda normal.
You know, there's some, uh, hey, there's one there, but I thought there was something there. I missed you at the beach. He's out there like a kid that's on the curb with a baseball in his gloves and everything. Parents, go. It's all weird. No, I need it, I need it. Yeah. I bet you I need it more than you. Tea. Thank you, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, that clock says two minutes till, but my official timepiece says six P M. So I'm going to, uh, declare this regular agenda meeting at the Freeport City Council on Tuesday, February twenty-second, twenty-two, at six P M. Call to order, I will, uh, I will note that, uh, we have a quorum present. We have a member of council that's present by telephone, Councilman Brimage, can you hear us? Councilman Brimage?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you, so, uh, and that all proper notices have been given. Uh, with that, I will officially call this to order and ask that, uh, we all rise in the invocation. The pledge of allegiance, Mr. Kelty, you will lead us in the invocation, please, sir.
Mr. Farmerhead, heavenly father, we thank you for this glorious day. We thank you for the opportunity to continue to serve you, um, and serve the citizens of Freeport. We ask your blessings on all, all this, the entire city, on our nation and the state of Texas. Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting, that you guide our thoughts and our words and our actions, and that they all be honoring, uh, to you. We ask all this, Lord, in the name of your son, Jesus, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the flag of the state of Texas.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, may we see. At this time in our regularly, uh, scheduled stated meeting, it's time for citizen comments, and we have a few, uh, Ms. Natalie Bires, Mrs. Natalie Bires. Good evening.
Good evening, I am Natalie Bires, I'm gonna introduce myself as, um, a candidate running for Missouri County Treasurer. Uh, wanted to introduce myself and let everyone know who I was. Um, I'm a third generation Missouri County resident. We are raising our two children, uh, Nicholas and Adrian in Hamilton. My husband and I have been married for fourteen years. For the past fifteen years, I have been in education. A lot of people ask, how did you go from teaching to politics? Uh, my answer to that is, I've always had a servant's heart. Um, every job that I've held, you know, I've enjoyed working with my community. Um, took a leap of faith last year, decided to make a change in my career path, and I started working for the Missouri County Tax Office, where I'm learning about our financial systems and, uh, working with the policies and procedures of the county every day. Um, I was introduced, um, to the position for treasurer, uh, through my experience at the tax office, and was really excited to hear about it, um, because I've always wanted to serve my public, or serve the public in a larger capacity. And so I'm looking forward to working with my community, interacting with them. Um, I do so every day, our job, our county is growing immensely. Uh, I work with new residents and our current residents every day, and so I, I believe that, um, our leadership roles should be filled with people who have, um, a passion for public service and excellence, and I know that I have the head and heart to fill that role. And so I just wanted to let y'all know who I was and what I served for.
Thank you very much, it's our pleasure having you down here, good luck, ma'am. Next, we have Dr. Gordell.
I'm Dr. Cody Gordell, thirteen sixty North Brussels Port Boulevard. Uh, just wanted to invite the mayor, councilmen, uh, city officials, and then city, uh, citizens. We are opening the spot officially, which is our in-house facility. Uh, we are gonna have an open house Saturday and Sunday, Saturday from ten to two, uh, Sunday from one to four. Official opening day will be, um, Tuesday the first, so, uh, we're gonna do a ribbon cutting at ten o'clock. Uh, if anyone would like to join, we'd be happy to have y'all, uh, be proud to have y'all. But we just wanted to announce that, we're excited. Uh, we hope that the, uh, citizens here in Freeport and citizens in surrounding cities will enjoy this new business. Thank you.
We appreciate you for, uh, what you do for our animals and certainly for expanding in the city of Freeport. Thank you, Dr. We'll see you at the end. Next, we have Mr. Keith Stumball.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Uh, my name is Keith Stumball, live at five eighteen West Fourth here in Freeport. I'm here to, uh, encourage the city, uh, to use common sense when enacting new, uh, ordinances in the city and then making new rules for, for things that cities. A couple of things have caught my attention recently, uh, one of which, of course, is the, uh, one of the agenda items tonight about the requirement for city council members, you yourself, Mr. Mayor, and all board members of volunteer boards, um, and committees to disclose their financial information. To discuss was, uh, I had served on the planning committee and when we were reviewing the, uh, new ordinances to be enacted by the city, uh, one thing that, uh, really didn't pop up on our radar when I was serving on the board was the fence ordinance, which has come to my attention that the residential fence ordinance restricts only up to six feet fences in all cases, regardless of anything. Uh, even though there are fences in behind people's houses and alleys all over the city. Uh, and the other thing is, uh, common sense is that, you know, when you build a fence and the pickets are six feet and you have a rock board in the bottom that's six inches tall, that requires that the contractor or the fence builder have to cut every single one of those pickets off so that the fence doesn't exceed six feet. So that just doesn't make sense, it doesn't make economic sense, it doesn't make common sense to me. Uh, so, uh, that ordinance, I believe, should be revised to allow greater than six feet, um, maybe six foot six or something like that, and up to seven or eight feet, uh, at the rear of the property where you have a border with the alleyway, because you certainly don't want people prowling down alleyways and be able to just peer over your fence into your backyard and so forth. So, common sense to me, uh, would make sense to, you know, change that ordinance to be more reasonable, uh, and make exceptions for these cases. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, uh, Mrs. Pearson.
Oh, I'm like, thank you.
What number would you like to go on?
I haven't read it all yet.
Pardon me?
I haven't read it all yet.
Okay, so, uh, the laws have changed where folks can actually ask or speak to a particular council item agenda. Uh, so you're still looking, and, and so the only thing that we require is if you do so, please fill out the appropriate form and, uh, check the agenda item. So I will set you over here and hope I don't forget you. Very good, uh, with that, I don't, was there anything else that was brought? Yes, sir.
Is there anybody can give you an update on Business Expo?
Yes, if you'll fill out a form.
Yes, sir, I will, thank you very much.
That's right. No, that's all right, no, that's a good thing.
Just wanted to give you a, a Business Expo, uh, update, which is this Thursday. Um, we gave a presentation to E D C last week, and I felt it's important that we do the same for the city, because y'all are one of the sponsors that helped the Missouri County expand Chamber of Commerce. My name is Landis Adams, I'm the E D C specialist and coordinate coordinator for the chamber. And, uh, currently right now, we are sold out of the event. This is a free event for the community, we have twenty-six, uh, vendors, we're gonna have workshops, we're gonna have speakers, S B A, S B C B A, uh, the college, Sex and Workforce Core. So we have a lot of resources that are gonna be available for business owners. Whenever we started this, this is basically a, a partnership with the E D C and the city on helping Freeport businesses. So, out of the twenty-six, I think we have ten Freeport businesses that are gonna be participating, so we're really excited about that. It's from ten A M. to five P M. At ten A M., we'll be having a ribbon cutting, so we really, uh, would like for the city council to be present if possible on Thursday. I know you have to have the agenda, um, posted by then, but, um, just kind of, uh, in addition, we're gonna have free headshots, so y'all need a headshot, get your hat on before. We're gonna offer that for one of our, our members, and so that we're really excited about that as well. Um, door prizes and different things like that. So, just wanted to give you guys an update and thank y'all again for, for allowing us to be out here and, uh, for the facilities, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Landis, we appreciate y'all very much, thank you. Fill out the form, there you go. All right, uh, anybody else? Very good, with that, we'll next go to presentation and announcements. Mr. Kelty, Employee of the Month for January, please, sir.
I'd like to invite Chief Motley to come up for the presentation. Employee of the Month is done to recognize outstanding, um, effort by city employees going above and beyond their duties or just, uh, being a shining light in carrying out those responsibilities in their service to the, to the, um, citizens. And the reason we're doing that, I think, is, is number one, you wanna recognize the employees and their effort, um, but it also, I think, reflects well on the city as a whole when you recognize outstanding efforts of employees. Uh, so, if not further ado, I'd like to go ahead and invite, uh, firefighter Thomas Thornton to come up.
This, uh, nomination came from, um, the, uh, uh, supervisor Christopher Viera through the, the chief police deputy, and I'll just read what he wrote here. Said I'd like to respectfully nominate firefighter advanced E M T, Thomas Thornton for Employee of the Month for January twenty-twenty-two. Thomas came to the city of Freeport in January eleven, twenty-twenty-one, so he's just been here for a little over a year. After going through, uh, a thorough testing and interview phase, Thomas has offered a full-time employment with the Freeport Fire Department. He, he being a husband and father informed us that he needed time to speak with his family in order to make the right decision, and he is also on the list for employment with, uh, a much larger, more respected department. I would take the coverage at that.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, but I appreciate the fact that he waited, he waited his option and chose Freeport. After waiting his options, he did choose Freeport, or as the best fit, where he and his family decided to join the EMS and fire team. Since Thomas, uh, has done nothing but contribute energy, self-initiative leadership at a much higher level than expected through this tenure, and that always charismatic smile, when he doesn't have a mask, I guarantee he's smiling right now. No matter the situation, he is truly a positive asset for the department with his continuous positive attitude and willingness to provide the highest level of care for our citizens on behalf of EMS response. Now, for Employee of the Month, you know, we have a lot of great employees and accolades that we give them are easy, but they, the fact is, he needs to have done something in January that really makes him stand out. He wrote, "Over the past series, continued to work full-time while attending advanced life safety school and recently obtained his advanced E M T certification after passing his N, N R E M T test." The very first time he, uh, he tried to, which is an outstanding achievement, and I know that's a very tough task and it took him. He's gonna do a conference in January, and we just wanna recognize you for that outstanding effort and the, and the positive way you reflect on the department and on the city, so. With that being the case, I would like to go ahead and present you with Employee of the Month.
Congratulations.
I will need someone to take the picture, that's why I'm not taking a mission.
Here, here's got a, oh, got a picture.
It's always a good day to recognize folks and stand out in our community, so thank you so much. And especially thank you to all the fire department, uh, our city staff, our police officers. We're just very proud to, to work with y'all. Next item, uh, gentlemen and ladies of the general audience, it's a consent agenda. We have two items, and one is consideration of possible acts on approval of city council meeting minutes from February seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Number three, consideration of possible acts on approval of street closures for the spring market days on Saturday, March twenty-sixth, and Saturday, May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, gentlemen, I await your pleasure.
Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion, Councilman Kane, to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a second from Councilman Mariah. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, begging motion carried unanimously, thank you very much. Council, business, regular session, I'm gonna use mayoral privilege and actually. Council, business record session. I'm gonna use mayoral privilege and actually adjust this just a little bit. I'm gonna take item number nine, uh, first. Uh, item number nine addresses Mr. Stumbaus, uh, questions that he had and comments that he had. We appreciate those. Number nine is consideration of possible action on ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash two-six-five-nine, amending ordinance two-zero-two-one dash two-six-four-eight, requiring all city council and pub, public board members to disclose all current real estate assets in Missouri County held in their personal name, immediate family's name, business name, all business entities owned and partnered in Texas, any and all business agreements with any other board or council member, any or agreements or contracts with the city. The amended, the ordinance that is, uh, I asked this to be on the agenda, uh, uh, with some, uh, additional help. Uh, this particular ordinance is proposed, ladies and gentlemen, if you read it, and council, if you read it, it removes the request, uh, for public board members or committee members to disclose. Uh, in my opinion, as I mentioned at the meeting when I voted against this ordinance, the onerous, uh, uh, requirement to answer all this. And I'll, I'll state that again. I still think it's onerous, but I, I'm fine with it going in regards to city council, but I do not think it should extend to our board members and our committee members. I've already had a number of folks that have, uh, contacted me and said they were dropping their membership with the committees, uh, because of, of this request. So I have this ordinance out there, but I wanna draw everybody's attention, council included, the ordinance number twenty-nineteen dash two-five-six-seven, and this is our policy on our ethics, our code of ethics. And it's an eleven-page document, ladies and gentlemen, and it sets forth many of the same things that this ordinance and the prior ordinance requires. This is voluntary. The other's mandatory. But to me, public service, and it says it in here, and I've said it a number of times, is public trust. So we have an obligation not only to the council, but to y'all. And that's in here, and it already says this, and we approved this in two thousand nineteen. So it still exists voluntarily to even our boards and our committees. What I'm asking council to do tonight is to, uh, approve this particular ordinance, which will move the mandatory requirement, uh, that is placed on our board members or our committee members. Uh, with that, I'll certainly open it up for discussion. Unless somebody wants to make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve item number nine.
We have a motion to approve item number nine. Is there a second?
I think.
I have a second from Councilman Bremich. Uh, gentlemen, is there discussion on this particular item?
I have a couple of comments.
Please.
I'm glad we brought this back up. I just wanna remind the public and, are we on Facebook Live? The public is not here. Um, you know, when I ran for council and I had other candidates to run against, and when I looked at other councilmen run for council for the city of Freeport, the number one word used throughout was transparency. And so I find it very puzzling that we're here talking about just the opposite. And I ask, why did we even request it? Why did we even request this ordinance in the first place? Because we're trying to provide more transparency. Why do we have this Facebook Live? Because we're looking for more transparency. So this reeks of hypocrisy. This reeks of, of contradiction? It's very upsetting because it's confusing. It's confusing because another reason why this particular item was brought up last fall was because, uh, we didn't have a process of how we hold, uh, council accountable or board members accountable, and so.
We did. It was two thousand nineteen ordinance jet council opinion in regards to two-five-six-seven code of ethics. Right here, eleven pages.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I, I mean.
Have you seen it? Have you read it?
I'm happy to have that debate with you.
Have you read it?
I understand the, the spirit of it. I understood your explanation at the outset.
There are penalties within its own document.
Fair enough, but here's the deal. Is it okay to inform, for those board members to forget, to inform the board of their conflicts? Is that gonna be okay? Because what I'm looking for is the accountability. What I'm looking for is the enforcement of transparency. That's what's missing. We have a public in Freeport that when I arrived, and still to this day, when you talk about, the phrase you used was public trust, I say public's trust in the, in city hall is more than shaken, it's broken. That's why we have Facebook Live.
Go ahead, please, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Look, the public's trust is, is not just shaken, it's broken. That's why we have all these measures for transparency. It's not an onerous requirement. What's onerous is the lack of disclosure that has happened and transpired. I lived through that, being on the EDC. When I was on the EDC, not as the president, just as a regular board member, just as a volunteer. I took the oath, volunteered, even asked that if there was ever a conflict of interest, what was the requirement? It was a recusal. But I can tell you, there was examples in the past here where we had, uh, a previous city manager that probably didn't remember to disclose to the city, didn't remember to disclose to the public what he was going about doing. And I'm just telling you, that trickle effect has happened. That's why we have this overt level of suspicion in this community. And I'm thinking, why do we wanna remove this layer that at least provides the teeth if we need it? And the other part is, is that when we, and I can come up with examples here where we have former, uh, council members and board members who have had conflicts of interests, interests with different developers and different board members, um, having side agreements, business agreements, um, that had the board known about those agreements, the votes on the particular, uh, measures and the particular real estate transactions, and I can get into the specifics if we really wanna get into the weeds of it all, would have voted completely different had the board been aware of those relationships. Because then the board, I know I would have, would have said, hey, I think because you have that relationship with this particular developer, uh, you might wanna recuse yourself. But that wasn't offered up. And see, so what you're asking here, now, I don't expect to change anybody's mind, but I wanna use this moment here to, to express my concern.
Understood.
And that is that, you know, here we are, I wanna make sure that we have the board members aware that they're gonna have to be, uh, disclosing. We're not asking for tax returns. We're not asking for financial bank statements. All we're asking is, what property do you own in town? Because there's a lot of moving real estate in the city as we look to grow and evolve and improve. But also, what business agreements do you have, relationships that you have? Because it matters when the same old people that are on those boards all the time, who may be well-intentioned, maybe some haven't been, uh, are on those boards. I mean, we really gotta be careful about that. And I, and I, I gotta say, when we talk about board members who could be on this board, but they don't want to because they don't wanna disclose, well, then maybe they're not fit for the board. I mean, they're, they may have the bill, they may have the business skill, but why, why don't they wanna disclose what they have? I'm, I'm happy to disclose it all. You know, I'm not, I'm a small fry, but I'm happy to disclose that as a board member, as a council member, as an unelected official, as an elected official. And, you know, as a resident here, I would hope that anybody that wants to be on these boards has their servant's heart, wants to be there for all the right reasons, and is okay to disclose this. This isn't something that's overly onerous. This happens in most every city in the country. I think the population, there's a threshold of, I think if it's a hundred thousand or more. But I don't think we need to be a hundred thousand to know that we can still conduct ourselves with, uh, ordinances and procedures that help us to, to right the ship. And that's, that's all this is, is this, let's just try to help right the ship again so that we do have people's trust. And I think that's really what, what's missing here. And, uh, you know, to me, I, I'd have to vote against the change here because I'm gonna vote for transparency. This ordinance modification is a vote against transparency, and I just wanna leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Mariah, do you have anything you wanna add?
The only thing I just wanna say is that, uh, the perception of the public, from what I've seen, is, uh, that Freeport's corrupt. And I have to agree with Councilman Penya. You know, to the very least, the EDC, uh, should disclose their, uh, you know, their assets. But yeah, the public trust is, it's, uh, it's lost, and I think this at least, you know, gives, pushes us, pushes us a step forward. Uh, you know, as an elected official, you know, and I, I don't say this, uh, to all of the board members, but, you know, we're the government, you know, we're supposed to be transparent. Uh, you know, if you're on the EDC, that's a, that's a committee that holds about a million dollars. So it's, I think it's important for, for the public to know that we're trying to be as transparent as possible. And, uh, you know, the same thing with Facebook Live. We went Facebook Live so the public can see what's going on in the city of Freeport. What's going on? What's happening? What ridiculous scenarios we put ourselves in? And so, uh, you know, I, I think to the very least, uh, do the EDC and, uh, maybe in planning, but that, that's, you know, my votes for transparency.
Sure, I'm glad y'all like transparency. And I wanna make sure y'all read ordinance number two thousand nineteen dash two-five-six-seven, which calls a board means a board commissioner committee, which is established by city ordinance charter interlocal contract or state law. Uh, officer official means mayor, any member of the city council, any important member, uh, member of a board, committee, or commission set up by ordinance, charter, state law, or otherwise on a regular basis. It has five purposes. The purpose of the ethics policy is, one, to encourage ethical conduct in part of city official employees. Two, to encourage public service with the city. Three, to establish standards for ethical conduct of city official employees by defining and prohibiting conduct that is incompatible with the interests of the city. Four, to require disclosure by city official employees of their economic interests that may conflict with the interests of the city. And five, to serve as a basis for discipline those who fail to abide by its terms. Ladies and gentlemen, the council, this applies to the council and to the members of the board. This is a code of ethics that we approved back in two thousand nineteen, that we made ourselves subject to. It would make us more transparent. We are elected officials. Absolutely. There's a transparency issue, a trans, uh, transparency issue. I do not believe that the extent that this ordinance goes or what it was originally set for, that I think it goes too far. However, I'm willing to settle for that in regards to an elected official. Then we have to do our jobs and be transparent because we're the ones that appoint these folks to the commissions. So we need to do the diligence on ourselves rather on them. They still have a penalty if we're aware of something that comes up, and it's called censure, and it's called removal, and other methods that are allowed by state. But we as a council have to take it upon our shoulders to do our job and appoint the proper folks. Therefore, uh, Councilman Kane, you have anything else you need to add?
I do, Mayor. Uh, I feel like as, as councilmen of the city, elected officials, with any organization, leadership starts at the top. And it's transparency that we want. We have to lead by example. You know, with the boards, um, they are not elected, they are appointed. Uh, we have a liaison to each board. If we are doing our job properly, appointing the proper people to the boards, watching them, monitoring what's going on in the EDC or the planning commissioner or whatever, then I feel like we can nip a lot of this in the bud as, as it happens. I feel like we got this wrong, and including the boards. Uh, I'm gonna go a step further and put it on record that anybody that resigned from a board due to this ordinance and wants to reapply, they have my vote. I didn't mean to make you cry, Mayor.
No. Well, that was moving speech. I think that challenges. Uh, Councilman Bremich, you have anything you need to add?
No, I agree with, uh, Councilman Bremich.
All right. Uh, with that, I'll call the question. Um, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Absolutely not.
Motion carried three-two. Thank you. Item number four, consideration of possible action on approval of street closures for, uh, for the Earth Day and Wellness Market on April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. Mrs. Grayhan, please, ma'am.
EDC. Um, I was approached about a month ago, uh, Mr. DeRae, uh, and he was, uh, in part about hosting a health, a health and wellness benefit or income event in downtown Freeport. Um, he, uh, has given us his flyer, uh, and schedule as well, eleven hours that he's requesting moving from eleven, uh, AM to five PM. Uh, activities include vendors, uh, guest speakers, food, lobby, etc. Um, and he has requested that follow road closures as we wait for any of our city hosted events. Um, the road closure of Second.
As we wait for what, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
What was that? As we wait for what?
As we wait for city events, for like, if that's.
Is this a city event?
This is not a city event. Um, but the road closures, he's requesting moving from nine to five thirty uh, on the event day, or on, to, to Second and Fourth Street at West Market and East Park, as well as Broad Street at West Market and East Park. Uh, I did take this to, um, the, uh, the historical board for their recommendation, and their recommendation is that, um, that we, uh, let's see, Memorial Park needs to have a conditional use agreement uh, to limit the city from the liability associated with downtown special events that we're not directly responsible for. And so that's the staff recommendation as well. We have, um, that our city attorney creates such an agreement uh, to provide, to protect us from the liability for the events that are not directly hosted by or sponsored by the city.
Okay.
One other thing that is a little bit different, um, and we do have private entities that, that rent Freeport Municipal Park for different events, um, and there is a charge for that. We have not ever established a charge for the rental of the downtown park area, um, you know, and certainly, um, you know, regarding the, the road closures, that would require, uh, staff to set up barricades and eventually have some division of police in, in that regard.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? I probably need some sound, you know, just for you here.
I, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Mariah to approve the closure as requested.
Yes.
I'll say it.
And we have a second from Councilman, uh, Pena. Is there any consideration? Mr. Duncan, is something that you can get done in regards to, uh, the historical commission's request for a indemnification, conditional usage agreement? And what, what conditions are they asking for?
They are not asking for any commission.
No, no, they've been the, the Freeport Historical Commission.
Oh, they did not specify. They would, they would, I believe that's you.
A waiver of liability and, um, insurance probably.
I've done, I've done similar agreements for other events, so I can get that down.
And how does that work in regards to, uh, is there anybody here from this group?
Yes, sir. Mr. DeRae and his associates.
Hello. Uh, hello.
Hello.
Can you come up, please? You gotta fill out a form. I'll tell you what, bring it to me and I'll fill it out for you. So I'm asking you to come up. Yeah, I got them right there. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you. If, if, if you can go to the mic, please, sir. And, and what is your full name, please, sir?
It's, uh, Alfred Edward DeGiri.
Mr. DeGiri, uh, is this gonna be, uh, a number of different booths and so forth of different individuals? Or is it gonna be under one auspice of one group or?
Yes, uh, it's, it's local, uh, local elite killers and, uh, alternative medicine, uh, massage therapists, all, all around town. And it gets about, we got fifty vendors right now, and.
You said fifty?
Fifty. And we are reaching out further to, uh, a lot of people are willing to come down here to help this area energetically. That's what we do. Um, we feel that this, this town can, uh, get back to its roots again and start from the ground up. And that's what we're all about. So, uh, we, we've been reaching to San Antonio. And San Antonio people are coming down here wanting to do booths and everything. So, uh, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to bring back that, that light.
Good, sir. You gotta be getting foods and so forth?
Yes, we're we're trying to get uh leading food trucks and people to bring food in that area. So we can get the community to have other, you know, keep their lives a little bit healthier. So that's what we're trying to do, get we got things for kids, we're gonna do yoga for kids and and uh fountals and all that stuff, so it's it's kind of important to.
Alright, well, uh there's a motion on the floor, any further comment? I'd say that uh you know, if uh you know, it's permanent and so forth, it shouldn't be a problem. I I have no issue with that.
There's a this is not completely um unique, we did have the owner of the barcania, they did have a private land. The only difference is that he has business down downtown. Um that was connected with that with the with the Viking car show.
Very good, uh any further comments? Now I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried unanimously, thank you. Congratulations, I I got your form cut out and put it in, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh item number five, consideration possible, this is what I got right here. Consideration, item number five, consideration of possible action on approval of construction contract with Lucas Construction Company. For phase one contract concrete, street reconstruction based on bid award approved on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, Mister Kelty.
Uh yes, so this is the uh street contract that we had opened bids for, presented to council and notice of award was given on the twenty fourth. Since that time, um the engineer, President Nichols, has prepared all of the the bid documents, the contractor's turned in all the requisite. Um insurances of the bond and bonds for the project and it's ready to go. Um this just for the public information, is for uh street reconstruction of Harbors, West Ten Street, West Eight Street, West Sixth Street, Seventh and Fifth Street. Along with Lynn and Avalon. Uh this is a a large uh effort, it is a two point three, over two point three million dollar contract. Um and they decided to we give them notice, we will have a reconstruction meeting and be going on this.
Alright, very good, uh. And these streets have were approved. Wait back for me.
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good.
Aye, yes, sir.
Uh is there a motion, counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, Council McCain, to approve item number five, is there a second? Uh I heard it over here first, was it Council Penya or Council Wright? Council Penya, we have a second by Council Penya. Any further discussion?
Get a question. On the uh the street that included for the work of this contract, what's the total mileage on this?
I don't have the total mileage at this point, I I that's something I presented to the council earlier during the uh scoping of the project, I don't have the total mileage here.
On the scoping of the project, can I get a copy of that? Go in order to submit.
I I will forward that to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Very good, any further questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried unanimously, thank you. Item number six, consideration of possible action on approval of construction contract with uh Coru- uh.
Corver Rubius.
Corver Rubius remodeling services for public working offices based on a bid award approved on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty two. Mister uh Kelty.
Again, last uh last month, we opened bids for the um construction of the new public works office office building. Um we did receive a number of bids for that, the low bid, most responsive, that was awarded by council on the twenty fourth, was Corver Rubius remodeling. For two hundred and three thousand, two hundred dollars. Um they have since uh gotten a uh contract prepared, submitted their bonding and insurance and it's ready to to move forward.
So everything in regards to the bonding and insurance has been reviewed and approved?
Yes, sir.
And Mister Duncan, you reviewed the contract?
Yes.
Very good, uh counsel, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, Council Bremich to approve uh and the signing of the contract, is there a second?
A second.
And a second from Council McCain. Any further questions?
Yeah, I was curious if the demolition was included on this particular uh bid here, I was I.
No, the bid, the demolition of the existing building is not approved, is not part of this contract.
I uh I just want to voice this concern, it was something that that came up on the last go around when we were looking at these bids. I don't know if I I stress clearly enough to to just kind of stretch my head, this is the lowest bid and and generally in when we're looking at contracts. Um bidding on any kind of work, even on home remodeling as a homeowner. Um you generally don't always go with the lowest one, so that kind of raised a fight, but what raised the bigger flag for me was that the demolition on a. Construction one oh one project, it was that there was no demolition included on that and um I had asked for a copy of that. Bid of work, of the scope of work last week, I didn't get a copy of that, I would have liked to receive it just to review how we're doing that.
Is in the council packet?
Okay, well, I I still am uh hopeful that we can come under budget because originally, um you know, we're looking at. Sixty five dollars square foot for a uh commercial building and here we are, that comes out to a little under a hundred thousand and here we are at twice as much, so um I'm hoping that we come under budget. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions or comments? Not, uh we have a motion on the floor to approve, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, uh motion carried unanimously, thank you, gentlemen. Item number seven, consideration of possible action on architectural agreement with IAD Architects. For preliminary architectural design for Freeport Municipal Golf Course, uh comma clubhouse. Mister Kelty and Mister Kabala.
Yes, sir, um last year at the strategic planning session, um the council brought up the idea of developing um a a new clubhouse for the golf course with additional facilities. Uh for potential banquet and uh more uh storage space. IAD Architect is providing a proposal for the development of the architectural design development for the proposed construction of the new clubhouse. That was included in the budget, although this did come in significantly under what we had estimated for the scope of this con- uh contract. The service to be provided of the contract would be to evaluate the site for optimal location, assess needs and request. Uh scope of scoping of the building, develop preliminary conceptual floor plans and site plans. And then produce three individual pad bedrooms of potential building and develop preliminary architectural cost estimates for the construction of that facility. This will be information that will be necessary uh before we can actually bring a recommendation to council uh for uh proceed for this particular effort. Um the cost of this project, uh this this uh IAD Architect contract is thirteen thousand dollars.
What did we raise the budget for, Mister Kelty?
Uh I think it's twenty eight.
Thirty.
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 Thirty. And this is work that, you know, if we end up moving forward, will all be necessary um in the actual architecture and design, you know, the building to be able to take it out for bid. But we're gonna have a good idea of what the actual costs might be before we enter into that kind of contract.
Did we um entertain any other architectural firms to uh provide uh a bid on this or a quote to be done on this, so that we might get a.
Now, we actually.
Ideas on this?
We actually gone through a uh pretty competitive um RFP process. We already, architectural services, when we went through the uh renovation of this uh city hall design. And IAD Architect was selected as the most uh responsive and there they are, local um architectural firm. Uh with significant experience in this in this regard. Um and they were selected for city hall, um for that city hall renovation, so if that made the case, we had just gone through that RFP process about a year and a half ago. We did not repeat that process for this preliminary architectural design. Um and when you decide to proceed forward with architectural design, we could go through that process before we actually enter into a full architectural contract.
Will that seem as though we waste a thirteen day at that point?
I'm sorry?
If we do go, if we do go that route, when we build, we waste thirteen thousand with IAD upfront?
Yeah, that 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 the product that they produce is of the city's product.
Had a thirteen thousand dollar bill?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. I also mentioned here that in the the discussions last year for the budget on this was. Um the recommendation was certainly for a new clubhouse uh to uh upgrade from what we have and certainly try to fit with what we're we're looking to do uh with the with the course and elements improvements and management. But um it was also the clubhouse plus restaurant space, I don't think there was ever discussion of a uh another um public space, venue space for the clubhouse. But if that's to be included in that restaurant space, um I want to make sure that that's in there now. That brings up my next question, do we have a committee that would be allowed to, I I think there's a lot of citizens that might be interested in doing this and if we do this in the EDC certainly. To um work with a the architectural firm to make sure that the specifics are are vetted and and um identified and included. So that before it comes to council, it it contains all those features?
Yes, I would appreciate counsel's impact, if you can, but if you wanted to appoint members to the council or um we can definitely have people that use, you know, that are familiar with. The force um be involved. Um to make sure that the uh the smoke that we're designing is actually what y'all want.
Yeah, I think we include that as part of the the recommendation, I I vote I vote to approve it.
Thank you, three folks. One council member and a couple folks in public.
Sure.
Alright, um.
I think Brian as well.
Sure, sure. Um very good, so uh. I can't recall if a motion has been made, but it has not, would you like to make that a motion?
I'll make the motion as stat recommendation and to include the uh. Just the review board. Three, uh two, one council person and two citizens as well as Brian being the board. Working with IAD.
Well, we'll put Brian and the city administration uh is. Is is just administration, we'll have the three person, they can bring that up. Very good, understand your motion, counsel, you understand this motion and is and you've made the motion, is there a second?
A second.
And a second from Council McCain, is there any other discussion? Very good, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried unanimously, thank you, sir. Uh item number eight. Uh consideration of possible action on resolution twenty twenty two dash two seven four zero. Master fee schedule setting rates for rental of the recreation center, Mister Kelty.
Yes, so the city rents out um many of its facilities, pavilions, parks, um uh. The uh community center um for and has fees set for that. We had a recent request to rent the um rec centers for a block, a boxing club. Uh events which there's a fire for that in your uh in your packet. Um but there's, right now, we have no fees set up for that. Um what staff is recommending is a rental rate of two hundred and fifty dollars for eight hours plus twenty dollars per hour over that, if they wanted to come in an hour or two the day, the night before to help get set up. Um and then also a three hundred dollar refundable damage deposit. And this would then be available for anybody that might want to rent the rec center for other uses um or for the boxing club. I did get the impression, although I haven't talked to Councilman Mariah, I think he was the one that brought this up to Mister Petty. Um directly um that they may be interested in using this for this type of event more frequently.
Alright, counsel? Discussion? And or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve uh and follow the action recommended by uh city administration, is there a second?
A second.
And a second from Council McCain? Uh is there further discussion?
Uh one of the questions I would have for the event itself, um are we gonna have like a vendor booths there or there gonna be uh food trucks? And if if so, um will they be permitted and making sure that they have a sales center, sales tax received?
It is a a private event, so if they are selling food, I don't know what the policy is. Uh Lance, you might be able to speak to this regarding food in the rec center. I know they are planning to put some protective uh um surface down on the floor to prevent it, protect it from damage. Um but the city will not have food vendors, but the 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 tenant might.
I am gonna make the assumption that the city is covered for any liability of someone getting hurt during this event?
Again, we would have city attorney to draw up the paperwork necessarily to cover, thus in that regard. We do have, we do have uh liability for other rental venues. Um there was some discussion regarding whether or not we would require security for the type of activity that's going on there. Um I don't know how necessary that might be, but. It might be a good idea.
And Mister Duncan has already nodded that he can handle this, so there you have it.
I was just.
Pardon me?
I agree, thank you.
Okay, uh Mister Duncan, also just uh whispering in my ear that he would also actually recommend uh some type of security or security fee or security requirement. Uh to be taken care of through the contract, I guess.
I would recommend that we handle it the same way that we handle events at the uh River Place when they have alcohol.
What's that requirement?
That requirement is that they hire off duty police officers to provide security.
Is there a number requirement?
One, two, where'd you go?
Two at a time with alcohol.
Thank you.
That would be at the uh the private event.
They they would actually be paid directly by the the uh. By the the club.
Any further discussion? Alright, with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Uh ladies and gentlemen, that takes care of council business regular session. We're now going into the uh work session. Where council may deliberate, make inquiry, and any items listed in the work session. Um I just got one, I have one comment, uh Mister Kelty, we need to uh get a letter off or get a phone call too or both. And then let me know so I can contact Representative Pursuit, we gotta get a hold of text dot, the two eighty eight road repairs are almost gone. Uh all the asphalt that came in and did the temporary patches, uh it's it's getting as bad as it was before, so let's please get something out uh as quickly as we can. Uh with that, Councilman Penya, Ward A.
Um. Yeah, I have a uh couple of things I have on this list here, but I want to go back to agenda item and public comment. For uh the ordinance on transparency of the.
Number nine?
Yes, number nine, thank you.
Yes.
For twenty twenty two, twenty six fifty nine. I completely understand you called the question, I had one other comment, I wanted to make sure I got in there. Um I just.
No, I apologize, I thought you forgot.
No, you're fine, no, your shoulder was turned and I know you have a bum shoulder.
I do, thank you.
Um. Trying to look at the words that you had identified on the uh description, bear with me, look at my notes. Oh yeah, the previous ordinance, and just kind of take this for what it's worth here going forward. The previous ordinance was was intended to encourage transparency. And it prohibits transparency by requiring transparency to the city offices. And what's interesting is that I think that's really kind of the whole deal here, we're always encouraging people to act in their best. In the best interest of the the city and uh in their voluntary capacities. The problem is that. And I think it's a little naive and and certainly counterintuitive to remove that requirement because basically the the track record has not been good. Um that said, I'm curious about the form itself, um the form. That is, I guess, now incumbent upon this council to to complete and fulfill or 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 fill out. That particular form, that's pretty much a legal instrument at this point, is that right? Mister Duncan?
I'm sure.
And I'm curious if that form was vetted by yourself? And if not, I'm curious as to why we would put the city at risk liability wise by not using our legal counsel. So can you confirm that you actually put that together?
Uh I did not put it together, uh I've received.
Cause I do not want to be putting my name or information on anything that is uh not legit.
I I did not put it together, uh I think after it went out, I I asked for a copy, so I could review it.
Have you reviewed it?
No, sir.
Okay. Oh. Okay.
Can we get that reviewed and then um look to see how we're going to have full participation? Can we get that reviewed and then look to see how we're going to have full participation?
Actually, since, you know, three councilmembers protected you, because now we have an extension of the thirty days to respond to it, because we passed a new one, so yes, we can. But I did answer mine, and I added something else to it. I put my Zodiac sign. Ladies and gentlemen, I am a Pisces. Just wanted y'all to know that.
What's your favorite color?
Royal blue. I didn't put that on there. So let's get that back to, let's get that to Mr. Duncan.
I thought it would be burgundy.
Okay. No, no, I like export royal blue. I bleed maroon. Anything else, sir?
Yes, sir. Also, I'm curious, in the month of November, I had provided Mr. Kelty with the schedule, or excuse me, the light map for the city streets of First, Second, Third, Fourth, and Fifth. The lights have been installed, but they have not been energized yet, and I'm just curious why either other ones that have also been installed in the same period had or have been energized, but yet these particular ones, I think there's like fifty left, have not been energized. Do we have any sense on that? Update on that? Any reason why that is?
I'll make a call tomorrow and find out.
Thank you.
Were these just?
The new ones that were installed?
All the new ones on First Street, Second Street, Third Street, Fourth and Fifth. And I identified which ones were new ones and old ones that were not working. It's on the corner of.
Anything else, sir?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that, you know, Mr. Adams had mentioned the EDC was having the expo this Thursday. EDC is promoting the grants. There's been a high participation level for the grants too, so we're promoting that with the EDC. And I'm not trying to steal any thunder from Jerry. Jerry's the liaison. I just want to make sure I take the moment here to shine some light on what the EDC is doing. Also, we have the Mardi Gras parade in conjunction with the museum, and that's something the EDC has sponsored. And I mentioned this, is that not only are we looking to try to help promote the city, but those grants, and I use this platform here tonight just to announce that if you are a private business owner and you are looking for some grants, please contact the EDC offices for those. We still have money in the budget for that, and it's been well received by the current business owners, and just want to make sure I mention that again.
Thank you, sir.
I think I'll leave it at that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel McCain, Ward B.
Yeah, first off, for the record, in the last, in the citizens' comments, somebody or one of the citizens had mentioned that I was involved in the interviewing process with, you know, Ms. Roman, and just for the record, I wanted to be stated that I was not in the interview process. Second off, Ms. Roman, on my drive to get rid of some of these, get rid or repair of some of these vacant homes that are in disarray, I asked if you could check into the house at fifteen west, fifteen ten West Fifth Street. The windows were boarded up. There's a big hole in the ceiling, siding's fallen off in the garage in the back. Looks like it's trying to fall over. And that's all I had there.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Roman and Mr. Kelty, I'll ask to Mr. McCain for that question, please, sir.
In regard to fifteen ten West Fifth Street?
That's correct.
I know that there is a list of properties that were put together that were identified, and they have been going to the Board of Adjustments. They actually didn't have any this month, but they have three more that are slated to come down here in the next couple of weeks. And we'll have more to take to the Board of Adjustments, and we'll definitely look at that fifteen ten West.
It is an impressive list on my hand.
There were about thirty properties that we want to take. Obviously, all of them can go this year.
How many are we budgeting?
We have, what's the budget for the estate structures?
It's only going to handle about six or seven of them.
I'm sorry?
The budget was seventy-five thousand dollars, but the average demos are over ten thousand dollars.
They have seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted. Some of those will be taken down by the property owners, but if we have to take them down, the cost is, again, what is it?
Around ten thousand dollars a building.
Around ten thousand dollars a structure. Now, some of them are more. The third building west of Velasco on Second Street is one that is scheduled to be coming down, and that was about twenty.
That was twenty-eight thousand, but the owner is going to tear it down himself.
The owner is working on taking that down himself. But if we had to take that one down a bit more because of the larger structure.
Very good. Ms. Roman, I guess, Jared?
I like.
Counsel Mariah, Ward C.
Yeah, just on Seventh Street, Lance, on Seventh Street across Arrington Park, seventeen hundred block. You know that there's a dip. I believe it's kind of right in front of Mr. Garcia's, one of his rental properties, I believe. It has gotten a bit bigger, and you could see, I guess, I don't know, a truck went through there, that dip or whatnot. It took a chunk of the street out more, a little bit more than it was there, so that it's gotten a lot bigger. Kind of looks like a hazard now.
I'll look at it personally. It's in phase one, restructure, concrete road.
Yeah, but it just, you know, just looking at it, and it just, it's pretty, pretty bigger, a lot bigger now than it was then.
Yes, sir. I'll look at it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Petty.
You know what? That's about it. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Counsel Remig, Ward D.
Yes, sir. Very good thing. I'd like to say, Betty is through on the job well done on the sidewalk coming down the crease. Great job, and I'm looking forward to the completion of that. This could be really going to be, we just kind of need some time now to take that. Please thank your folks who are out there all the way towards you on that. Also, I'd like to update all of the air quality to clean off.
Yes, we do have, we did get that report back on Friday, and I have, we'll be reviewing that with the company. Lance, is there anything you want to say in regard to that report?
No, sir. We just got the summary back. I emailed it to you last night. I received it last night, yesterday.
Okay.
Summary report, so we've got to go through it, but we did have it completed.
Is it safe?
There were a couple of areas of concern, but it was, I didn't think that there was.
Let me just ask you another way. Is there anything of immediacy that require us to shut it down? We need our folks to be in a safe workplace. I know y'all haven't looked at it close enough, but, you know.
I've got to review it a little bit closer to determine that, but it seems that the issues that are causing there are due to the humidity in the building. So when we go in to redo the building, we need to make sure that we do put dehumidifiers in that building throughout to keep everything down.
Lance, where are we standing with Hunting?
With Hunting, we have, I've had something that I've contacted the actual company for the boiler, and they're supposed to be down tomorrow. So they figured out what it is. It's a thermostat, a controlled valve that's in there that's out. They figured out, this company came down, sent a guy down, a rep down, took a look at it, and determined what the issue was, and they're going to, they have to get it apart, and they're supposed to come down and reinstall it on the boiler.
Well, if, you know, I appreciate that, and I thank you job well done on that, but if Hunting has some responsibility on this, let's please get that information, Mr. Duncan, so we can review it, because this is horse maneuver.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Lance, was the sidewalk that comes up with the Velasco Bridge, was that part of the sidewalk repair program that we budgeted?
We budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year for concrete.
Gotcha.
That's for sidewalks, that's for ADA, that's for road patches or anything like that. We have not actually. I've put together, I've been working on it, got together a sidewalk replacement program that I'll bring for the strategic plan meeting, so we can determine how we're going to go about applying that plan in the city with numerous sidewalks that we have. But no, we, so far this year, like right now, we're replacing the sidewalk ADA at Stixton Beach. We have residents that call in to request that have ADA issues at their homes, A and D for sidewalks done, so we address all those first. So there are children that have our ADA that can get out, actually have places to walk and things like that, so we address those first. We've got some bad sidewalks on Avenue A right now. We've got to get it replaced next. Once we finish the Velasco Bridge, and then we have a lot of road patches themselves, we have to get to concrete wise on Avenue A and B. So our schedule's pretty, you know, lined out on the concrete side, but each year the city budgets a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for concrete. And that, like I said, goes to curb and gutter, inlets, replacements, everybody have bad inlets and drainage and things like that, but it's not earmarked for certain projects. And when we do, when I do bring the sidewalk replacement program to the strategic plan, we go through it and all this stuff, then we'll actually sit down. We've got to sit down and see how we'll plumb this, so definitely we'll go forward with that.
And it won't have that, that once those two structures are demolished there on Second Street, they will continue and extend that sidewalk all the way down to the first entrance to the park?
Yes.
Also, we opened bids today.
Yes, sir. On the Living Walking Trail.
On the Living Walking Trail.
One company bid on it. Last time we had three companies, we rebid the project, and I think it was Tex Con, I can't remember. Tex Con was the lone bidder on it, and they pinned in around a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
And that's to take up all the concrete and replace the entire trail with crushed granite?
With crushed granite.
Six feet wide?
Six foot wide, four inches thick.
And then we'll tie all the way into that sidewalk.
Tie all the way around the living. I'd like to say we budgeted three hundred thousand.
Fix that under budget.
Yeah, we budgeted three hundred thousand for the property, so.
Is there a way I can see, like, I guess, those ADA sidewalks, if I can get a list of it, email it to me?
Okay, cool, cool. I have another question here, another question on City Hall. Does the AC system work on that, on City Hall, on all three floors?
The AC system does work. It struggles with the humidity. I know before I came here, they put in a new system. But in the remodel, we've got to do a lot of duct work, changing out duct work and some valves and stuff to help move the air in different directions. The duct work needs a lot of replacements to get the air proper.
So part of that repair, the remodel of City Hall, prior to that, are we repairing the, in terms of any kind of mold remediation on this particular study? Are we looking to repair or replace, I should say, the duct work? Because I understand that, you know, the ACs act like dehumidifiers, and so I'm just curious, you know, if we're making sure that we.
Well, we have, we have the ducts cleaned pretty recent, and they did some treats in there. They did ultraviolet, they got ultraviolet installed in there, but the report didn't come back that the air handlers do have a little bit of issues with them. They need to be adjusted in the remodel to help control everything. But most, most of your issues in the building, the report stated was on the east wall of the building. That's the side, when we do get floodwater in the building, that's the side to come down on, so that's probably the west portion of the building on that east wall. I'm sure when we get with the architect and everything, when we remodel, they get some report on it, the building remodelization improvements as well.
So the report we're reviewing here this week is going to be for City Hall. Is that right?
For City Hall, yes, sir.
Now, if that report comes back to say that the mold level is onerous and a danger to our staff, what's the plan to office our city staff?
I don't, I don't have a plan.
They've already given the question from Mr. Kelty.
There is, the fact, the report has not said that there is, I mean, the preliminary information that we've gotten back has indicated that there's not anything onerous. They are coming up with some recommendations regarding further remediation and improvements. As far as if we needed to relocate city staff, right now, we don't have a plan to move staff out of City Hall.
So trailer?
Yeah, you know, I'm still a lot of like, I'm kind of waiting out before I call someone on those road clears, but I have four more questions until they're done.
Yes, sir.
Other question here is, it relates to the service center.
Yes, sir.
While that service center is under construction here, where would we be housing our city staff that are in the service center? Yourself?
Generally, myself is housed there, and the city secretary is housed there. She's in the warehouse and office out there.
And right now, that warehouse is being, has been identified to have mold issues, is that right?
That, the whole area has some mold issues. There's, there's no way of rounding down any.
How long has that been going on? How long has it, have you been aware?
That building had mold in it, but I've looked into, I mean, even the pictures and mold, pictures on the models and so.
That was about, what, a year and a half ago?
Let me make sure. What are, wait a second. What are we talking about? The warehouse or the building? Because there are two different things.
The offices.
I'm talking about the offices.
You mentioned warehouse.
I used at least, I meant the offices that are being used by Mr. Petty and the secretary of the Service Department.
That's one of the reasons why we're moving forward with the new office space, because of the fact that back in two thousand and sixteen, there had been a major overhaul of that office, I think, to try to address that issue, and then we did more again in two thousand and nineteen. When did you start that?
In two thousand and nineteen, when I came in, they were finishing the upstairs office. That was all the financing on the building.
The problem is the age of the building, the ACs, just the air, air distribution system in the building was just antiquated.
I'm just curious if we, why we won't have you already, why haven't you been relocated already if there's been known mold issues?
We've talked about relocating, of course, to the Razz's Port Pallas building. That could have been a temporary spot for us to go to, to get out of that. The V I C building is not an option. It's got a lot of issues. It's got to have some remediation to run or do, things like that, so it's just fine in the room. We put it somewhere.
Don't we have space on the third floor of our building?
We don't like them that much.
Yeah.
And I think there's also office space on the second floor.
There is office space on the second floor.
It's that way now on the first floor.
He moved the secretary to the warehouse office building, and then you go in there when you have to, I guess. Does anybody else goes in there?
No, my mechanic's out there. He comes in, turns his work, he has a gauzer, he has receipts and things like that. But that little building she's in is not, it's got it in it too.
Yeah, I'm concerned about her safety too, especially through this remodel, the how do you guys relocate it? But I'll leave that at the capable hands of Mr. Kelty to decide.
Anything else, sir? Mr. Remig, Counsel Remig, I understand you had one more point you wanted to make?
Yes, sir. I just want to go back to the real estate, the City Hall, the concern that I brought up.
Yep.
And firstly, first and foremost, the employees currently, I want to make sure that there's nothing, not the floor, that is affecting the current employees or in that building. And number two, that we're not putting money into that building that we cannot recover, that we're not going to throw all this, these things, but also to the store, to say, we can't, the air conditioning is too humid, you know, there's no way we can provide it, it's not possible. But we really need to think about that, make sure that we're doing the right thing at the point that we're at, and not wait till somebody, like, we've done it, something will happen.
Sure. No, Counsel Remig, I don't disagree with that. It'll be really interesting to see the overall architectural plan or report that we expect from IED soon about the City Hall renovations, and then we may have to make some other decisions. But I think that will be a telling document. Right now, we don't have that.
And I will, I expect I'm going to get that report the next day or two, and I'll report it to all the councilmen and all the city staff that will be available.
Very good. Mr. Kelty, do you have any announcements?
Ms. Roman actually has a presentation for council tonight, and she included some stuff in her package, so I would like to go ahead.
Ms. Roman?
First off, I wanted to give a quick update. I looked at eighteen ten West Fifth. We already had an open code for some case on it. They issued a notice of violation on memory first with the dangerous structures condition. Do you have the PowerPoint presentation?
I don't have it. It's in the packet?
It's in the packet of the.
We'll have that at the next meeting. All right?
Not a problem. What Mr. Kelty referred to is that we've made great strides with the building department. We've done checklists, handouts. we've done checklists, handouts, and unfortunately, when I put it all together to bring to you is ninety-six pages, and I didn't think you wanna see that much of it, uh, but we do have a new display outright outside the front door of our building department and we have created a lot of checklists, handouts, all new forms, um, we've tried to break them down into specific categories to help our citizens, so it's not just remodeling, it's, this is the checklist we do, this is the checklist we do, so there's quite a number of, I believe, I think it's ninety-six pages of them, so.
It's both in English and in Spanish.
Sorry, sir?
It's both in English and in Spanish?
Yes, they are all in English and in Spanish, some of them are, uh, modern, so those are available upon request, I think the commercial one ended up at sixteen pages, so we divided it out, yes, sir, you do have a copy, so. Um, that's what we're calling it, so we're trying to make great strides in making, um, things easier for our citizens, uh, as of next week, they'll also be put online so that they can access them there as well.
I will have that for, for the next meeting. Um, also, um, Lance and Kathy have been helping me, uh, put together, uh, a monthly report to council, they can, it's a status update of everything, so I have to move by council and, and plan and the budget, uh, so you know where everything is at, um, money wise and, and status wise. I will have that at the company's report.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other reports, Tim?
No, sir.
Any updates or, uh, apartment head reports to read to hear, other than Mr. Roman?
Um, no, sir.
All right, very good. Ladies and gentlemen, we are now gonna go into closed session, item number eleven, which is executive session regarding, A, potential litigation, consultation with city attorney fee deliberations about a little property east end of Brad's Cove, C, personnel matters, review of job performance issue of city manager, D, economic development project two zero two two dash C, in accordance with Vern's Texas Government Committee annotated check five five one, section five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, one five five point zero seven four, and five five one point zero eight one, I imagine that's five five one point zero seven four. But, uh, I would ask that, all right, very good, thank you. Get out.
Hey, any updates on what we're gonna do with the hospital speed, uh, with the building here, the city on the ice?
Any other questions?
They urinate all day.
We're, we're just saying, we're working on it. Right away, I see. Yes, ma'am, very quickly. If you can catch me, can you put me in my truck, yes? All right, thank you. What was the verdict? Did they assist punishment?
Tomorrow.